Okay, so just a quick announcement to let you know that we ran a little bit late in closed session. We will be starting at 7:05. 7:05 gives about three and a half minutes. Okay, it's 7:05. I'm calling the San Leandro City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, January 21st, and I will ask Vice Mayor DeLitas in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able to. So, Madam Clerk, would you please take role?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Aguilar?
Present.
Councilmember Azavito?
Present.
Councilmember Bolt?
Present.
Councilmember Simon is not here at the moment. Councilmember Viveros Walton?
Present.
Vice Mayor Bowen?
Mayor Gonzalez?
Present. The City of San Leandro conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate, discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 and/or the California Fair Employment and Housing Act. California Penal Code Sections 430 or 415 are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Please see the City Council Handbook and City Council Meeting Rules of Decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, your announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment session, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once public comment is opened, hands may be raised to speak. There will be a 30-minute window for public comments, which will take place under Item 7, Public Comments, as per the published agenda. After this time is up, the council will proceed with the rest of the meeting's agenda. If you have not had the opportunity to speak during the initial 30-minute period, there will be another chance to do so after Item 12, City Council Reports. Thank you.
So, do you have one announcement? I will be setting up an ad hoc committee, which will look at a longstanding list or series of lists of council referrals. I have appointed myself and Councilmember Aguilar to that ad hoc committee. We will meet prior to our priority work session on February 1st. Once or twice, we will go through the existing list, and we will look to simplify and/or mark off things that have already been completed or whatever the case may be, enabling in a transparent way for the council to understand the work that we have done. At this point in time, we'll go to report on closed session action items today. I don't believe we had any reportable action.
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable actions were taken in closed session, but direction was provided to staff.
And just a little bit of transparency for the public. We are working through, one of the things that we worked through in anticipation of litigation, recommendation and direction to hire some legal counsel, and that contract or adjustment will be forthcoming at some point in time. We also did some work on the city manager's evaluation process and making sure that we had alignment amongst ourselves to what that looks like working with our consultant, MRG. At this point in time, we're moving to item number four, which is recognitions, and today we don't have any of those, so we'll move to our consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that a council member would like to pull? Seeing I'm going to move to public comment on this item.
Mr. Mayor, there's no public comment in person, but we do have one hand up online.
And to be just clear about something here, Councilmember Aguilar, is it fair to assume that's a motion, or did you want to pull an item?
That was going to move to move the consent calendar.
I'll come right back to you in just a second, if you don't mind. So, we'll go to public comment, please.
Doug Spalding, you may unmute yourself. Doug Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
There is that button. Good evening, members of the council. Hope everyone's well. On the 21st of January, I would briefly to items 5B and 5C and my continuing efforts to improve my understanding of all things financial, since I am a financial dunce. In item 5B, apparently $1.45 million in what appears to be a cost overrun for construction of the police-administered building dispatch center, et cetera, down on East 14th, is up for consideration. And what I want to understand is, what was the total cost? I found a reference from the East Bay Times, November 2018, about the $9.4 million project, which I assume cost more than that. But, you know, if that's all in the ballpark, it means that this cost overrun is somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% on top of what we planned. I don't understand how we would enter into contract that exposes us to that kind of cost overrun. So, I don't know, but it seems like somebody's got getting a silver hammer out of this. I don't know. In item 5C, this is about the ARPA reallocation that you undertook in December, and I'm not really quite sure why you're taking money from the Capital Improvement Fund and Measure BB, because it doesn't really say what that's going to be applied to. So, that's my question is, where is that money going? It doesn't look like it's going to pay us where this cost overruns, so where's that going to? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
So, just very quickly, in addressing some questions that have been raised by the public, with respect to item 5C, for clarification, in December, we moved money in order to be ARPA compliant, or obligations that we needed to meet by December 31st, and we made sure that we were compliant. In moving those monies, that then left a gap. And so, this is the second half of that transaction, which is filling the funding gap where money had been reallocated in order to assure compliance. And this was discussed in Finance Committee. It was just talked about a little bit in these chambers. And then, with respect to the cost overrun on the building, there is no silver hammer or golden hammer or platinum hammer, but there definitely was a cost overrun, and the council has explored specifically methods and mechanisms to keep a closer eye on projects. This is a project that was running for a number of years. It's not a very short-term project, but rather a project that preceded probably almost everyone on this council. So, with that in mind, I do have, I believe, what's going to be a motion from Councilmember Aguilar, but I'd like for you to state it officially or clearly.
I would like to move the consent calendar.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Councilmember Aguilar. I'm going to go next to Councilmember Azavito.
I'd like to second it.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Aguilar with a second by Councilmember Azavito. Please vote.
All votes are in. Motion passes 601, with Councilmember Simon absent.
At this point in time, we'll go to any council, any reports from city manager or city attorney. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, community members. I am excited to announce that the winter shelter opened last week. The shelter will be located at First United Methodist Church, located at 1600 Bancroft Avenue. The shelter will be open every Tuesday through April 30th, 2025, but will also be open when the temperatures are forecasted to be below 42 degrees and when there is a 50% chance or higher of rain. The hours of operation are 5:00 PM to 7:00 AM to the following day. The shelter is for those who are 18 years and older and provides a warm dinner, overnight shelter, and breakfast. For families seeking winter shelter resources, please call 211. And if you'd like more information, please visit the Human Services website. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my announcement.
Thank you. With that, we'll go on to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not listed on our agenda. So, it's not on our agenda, and you'd like to talk about it. As long as it's within the purview of this council, please come forward and chat with us about your items of interest.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment in person, and two hands up online.
Okay, let us go online, please.
Jenny Chang, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor, and city councilmembers. I'm Jenny Chang, longtime resident of San Leandro. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I just want to comment and give support to Councilmember Brian Azavito for what happened on Wednesday, as we all know. I just wanted to say, just, we don't know anything that happened, and we should just not assume, and just give support to his family and him as he's going through a difficult time. He may be stressed. I just hope everything goes well for him in terms of that, and I believe he will come out innocent. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my feelings tonight.
Thank you. Doug Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Well, first, I say amen to Jenny's comments. While yesterday was a dark day for many of us, there was one reason to celebrate, and all freedom-loving people celebrated that after 50 years, long-held political prisoner Leonard Peltier had his sentence commuted, and he has returned home. And I think in alignment and in spirit with this occasion, it's long past time for the City of San Leandro in recognition of their contributions of First Peoples to adopt an acknowledgement, a simple acknowledgement to read at all the council meetings and all of its various committees and all boards and committees. It's something very simple to do. Second thing I wanted to mention parenthetically, I noticed that Mr. Baloo, now resident Baloo, is our representative of the Alameda County Housing Authority. I know that he has some history there, but I think our city would be much better served by not having a landlord, and Mr. Baloo is by all accounts an excellent landlord, not being represented by a landlord, but by a tenant, someone like, oh, Jenny Matt, who knows so much on this topic. I think sometimes we overthink things. We want more data, but I think that spurs us to inaction, or worse, maybe it becomes an excuse for not taking action. And so, I think analogous to the lack of a land acknowledgement, you know, after two years of demands, we are still waiting on housing protections. I know it's coming up, coming up at the Rules Committee tomorrow, but I think you're out of touch with who renters are when I open my San Leandro Times and see that the 10 affordable studios at Central Callan are going to run $2,725 a month. I can't afford that as a 30-plus-year teacher.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there's no more public comment?
So, we will close public comment and come to our next item, which is our public hearing, item 8A. So, now for this, we're going to make some adjustments here to who's standing and sitting where. So, we're going to have Mr. Pierota serve as attorney for the city from, as we would call that, the bullpen, or are you going to come over to our lectern? And we'll have Conflicts Council, council that will represent the city council for this hearing in particular. Welcome back. And I'm going to just start very quickly with Councilmember Bolt.
Yes, I've been advised I need to recuse myself of this issue because I've already voted on it in the Planning Commission phase.
That makes sense. So, if you would please just step down from the dais, we will text you or call you when this item is complete. Thank you for that. Okay, so just very quickly, the order of business for our public hearing is going to be pretty simple. It's going to be the staff presentation first. We'll take some questions or comments, clarifications, but really focusing on questions from us as the council. The appellant will then come and present. We'll open the public, and obviously, we'll take questions and exploration, clarification at that time. We'll open the public hearing. We'll hear from the public. We'll close the public hearing. We'll give the appellant an opportunity for rebuttal. We will then engage in discussion and decision-making. Okay, so let us begin. We've got Planning Manager Wayland Lee here to introduce the item on behalf of city staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, members of the city council. My name again is Wayland Lee. I'm the city's Plan Division Manager. And the item before you is the consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit, PLN 23-31, to allow the construction of a new wireless telecommunications facility at 440 Peralta Avenue. The subject of the appeal is a proposed new wireless facility, which would include an 80-foot-high monopine, which is essentially a monopole structure designed to appear like a pine tree with space within the canopy to locate antennas. According to the applicant's statement, the tower would support AT&amp;T's FirstNet broadband network. It's also designed in a manner which allows for future co-location of antennas from other wireless service providers as well. Quickly for orientation, the proposed facility would be located near the corner of San Leandro Boulevard and Peralta Avenue, adjacent to the elevated BART line. An existing electric supply business currently exists on the project site, and abutting properties include a tow yard and a public storage facility. On November 7th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted 7 to 0 to approve the conditional use permit request. And then, following the Planning Commission's approval, an appeal of the decision was filed by an adjacent property owner, Mr. Wayne D. Russo, Jr. Per the city zoning code, when the action of the Planning Commission is appealed, the city councils is designated authority to hear that appeal. Also note that subsequent to the appeal, additional communications have been provided by the applicant as well as the appellant, which have been provided to council in advance of the meeting. Whenever the city processes an application for a new wireless facility, the city's review is not only guided by compliance with local zoning regulations, but also considers compliance with federal law as it pertains to wireless telecommunications. As detailed in the staff report, there are two particular aspects of federal law that are particularly relevant to the council's decision this evening. First, federal law preempts the ability of cities to regulate wireless facilities based on radio frequency or RF emissions. And federal law gives the FCC the sole authority to set RF emissions standards in the United States. And cities are prohibited from establishing standards different from the FCC or denying a project based on RF emissions concerns when it meets that federal standard. For the application for you this evening, RF emissions is a concern that's been expressed by both the appellant and members of the public. The applicant has provided documentation showing that the facility will, on operation, operate below the federal limits for RF emissions. Federal law also provides that if a proposed facility would close a gap in coverage, and the applicant has considered feasible alternatives, the city is required to allow for that facility to be constructed. For this particular application, the applicant has provided an alternative sites analysis, which is Attachment G in our staff report, which documents that a gap in coverage does exist and would be addressed through this new facility. The appeal filed by Mr. Russo essentially makes five main arguments, which are articulated in this slide. Staff has reviewed those arguments and is still recommending that the council uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the application. I'll just briefly talk about some of the points made in the appeal. First, the appellant argues that the public hearing notification was insufficient. Our records do indicate that all public noticing requirements in the zoning code have been satisfied, which includes onsite posting, mailing to property owners within 500 feet, and publishing of a legal ad in the paper. Secondly, with regards to RF emissions, as I mentioned earlier, documentation has been provided demonstrating that public exposure to RF emissions will be below the limits established by the FCC, and under federal law, the city cannot deny an application on that basis. Third, regarding design, the facility meets all of the adopted design development standards in the zoning code, including those which require camouflaging to appear like a pine tree, and height. The 80-foot height of the facility is the minimum height necessary to provide effective coverage based on documentation, and the facility would be required to meet building code standards for the And the facility would be required to meet building code standards for, um, the safe construction of the facility. Fourth, with respect to concerns about property values and future development, there are proposed conditions of approval, which I'll talk about a little bit more in the next slide, that ensure that RF emissions would not preclude future development on the adjacent parcels. Finally, with respect to environmental review, staff believes that the proposal qualifies for exemption under Secret Guide lines, section 15303 is a small facility and no future environmental review is, no future environmental review is required. Additional supporting information is provided in the staff report. Uh, I'd just like to quickly highlight a few conditions of approval that address some of the concerns related to RF emissions and, uh, development on the parcel next door. Conditions of approval, uh, would require that a report be prepared within 30 days of activation of the facility, confirming that RF standards are being met. And additional testing would be required every year for five years into the future, ensuring compliance into the future. In response to the applicant's concerns about future development, staff has enhanced the conditions of approval to require additional, additional testing and analysis whenever there is a proposal to develop a structure greater than 30 feet in height adjacent to the site. If RF emissions standards will be violated based on that testing and analysis, the applicant would be required to resolve the conflict. That could be, that can include adjusting the antennas or could also potentially include relocating or removing the antenna if, um, if necessary to meet compliance. In conclusion, the proposal is consistent with, uh, local zoning requirements for wireless facilities. And staff is recommending that council reject the appeal and approve the conditional use permit. Um, just quickly, before I conclude my presentation, I did wanna note that, uh, just wanna clarify conditions four and five in the, uh, in the resolution that the effective date would be of the approval would be the effective date of approval by council and expiration date would be based on approval of council, not the Planning Commission as well. That concludes my report. I am available to answer your questions that the council may have.
Okay, so turning to council for questions, clarifications, explorations. Vice Mayor Bowen, please.
For the, for future, any future development greater than 30 feet, um, there is a requirement to conduct a new RF compliance report. What is the timeline on that? Is there, is it time constrained of when they would need to do that study and then make modifications?
Uh, it would be required when the application's proposed, so when the application's being considered.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Member Simon, please.
To follow up on Vice Mayor, if there is another development coming in, RF study is conducted, RF study shows that limits are exceeded, what steps would be taken?
Under the conditions of approval, the applicant would be, the applicant for the wireless facility would be required to, um, address a conflict, and that could include adjusting the antennas or if necessary, relocation or removal of antenna, or removal of facility altogether.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I will ask a couple. Can you elaborate a little bit on the alternative height, the alternative analysis for alternative sites? Sounds like we, we did a review. And so can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
That's correct. The, um, the applicant submitted a alternative sites analysis, which reviewed other, other locations where a wireless facility could be, could be, um, created that would meet the, meet the, um, the coverage needs of the provider. Uh, the city's code requires that they, that the, um, analysis look at existing and proposed facilities within the search radius, which could provide, provide service, provide, provide service for the provider, um, which is a, um, standard that the applicant has met through their application materials.
And the search radius, you remember offhand, here was how, how big?
Um, I can, I can double check and clarify.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. And then the, the other question, just is a little bit broader, but do we have an existing, um, policy for compliance assessments? So a tower goes in, we've got, I don't know how many towers in the city. Do we have periodic assessments of compliance at those towers?
Uh, there's no, the, the, the city's zoning regulations require that the testing occur within 30 days of the city become op, 30 days of the facility becoming operational. Uh, the conditions of approval that are before you this evening recommend, in addition to that, that testing take place every year for five years on top of that.
But what I'm hearing is that the city broadly does not have regular updates to that test.
Yes.
Thank you. I think that's it for me. Councilmember Aguilar, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez, and thank you for the presentation. My question is with regards to, uh, can you talk about the importance of why this, uh, tower needs to go in with regards to public safety?
Uh, I think the applicant can elaborate on this a little bit more. There, uh, the application materials indicate that the, that the proposed network would support, uh, first responders exclusively, although the, the tower itself could accommodate, um, antennas for others, other wireless providers as well.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
At this point in time, uh, we will hear from the appellant.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council. My name is Ariel Strauss. I'm counsel for the appellant. I'm an attorney at Greenfire Law, and I, uh, represent, um, in particular, owners with concerns about cell towers, um, in all areas of telecommunications law and land use law. What's unique about this case is that the applicant concedes, and the RF emissions report itself, anticipates that the FCC limits will be exceeded in the buildable airspace of the two neighboring par, properties as well as 440 Peralta. What that means is that if a development were to occur in that space, those residents would be exceeding the FCC limits. Now, there is a proposal, uh, two conditions have been added, that are intended to address this issue. However, this is not a practical solution to this problem. It is a, a paper solution to this problem. And the reason for that is, uh, well, a couple fold. First is that the Planning Commission staff report and resolution do not discuss the general plan policies applicable to mixed-use infill development. And they've not addressed the housing element goals for this area. And that is the encouragement of infill development, and is a prioritization of infill development and mixed-use development. And when you have this process, where you have to have the back and forth with AT&amp;T prior essentially to, to submitting application, not later when the application is already submitted. That is far too late in development timeline. You do not promote those goals. Rather, what you're doing is you are prioritizing the building of an 80-foot tower in this location, a site that's not uniquely designated for that. You can also see in the EME report that when the 440 Peralta site is explained to be able to meet the housing element, um, unit count objectives, that's done by shoving the building far into the corner of the property. A large swath of that property is also rendered essentially undevelopable. Uh, these two, uh, dynamics, that's to say, dynamics on that property, the neighboring two properties, uh, are totally inconsistent with the general plan for the goals for this property. The other issue is simply the placement of that tower. So that tower is located right on that border between my client's property and 440 Peralta. And, uh, as identified in the appeal, there's an issue of the fall zone. The fall zone is not something that's specified in the city code, but it is an issue that's taken considered by, consideration by lenders, and particularly FHA lenders, um, when they are assessing how far the buildable space or the usable space of a property they're going to lend on can be. And in this case, because there are no setbacks, and because the tower is extremely tall, 80 feet, and the neighboring property also is varied, can be built up to 65 feet, there is, uh, a serious conflict there from the standpoint of the ability of a neighboring parcel to obtain financing. Uh, there also is the issue of the aesthetics. So when you have a parcel that can be built to 60 feet and a goal is to develop it, develop it for transit-oriented mixed-use development to a high degree, you don't want another structure right up against that property line. Now, it's true that there is no height limit set by the code. However, that does not mean that that tower would facilitate or be consistent with, with the general plans of the city. I wanna point out that the applicant also has not in any way rebutted these issues. They've simply sort of told you to disregard them. Um, there's no dispute about what would be required, at least no factual information provided to explain what would be provided to a lender to, uh, enable them to approve financing for this neighboring parcel from a standpoint of a fall zone, from a standpoint of engineering. In fact, there are no engineering plans provided for the tower itself. I understand here that a major issue is likely to be, uh, your interpretation of federal law. Um, and specifically, the prohibition on a locality in, um, making a decision on a basis of FCC-compliant RF levels. In this case, the EME report concludes that those levels will be exceeded in the buildable area. So it's not a situation, and this is where pretty much all the cases are. There are situations where the locality has their own opinion about it. Somebody says, hey, I don't feel comfortable with this. It's, the FCC said it's safe, but I don't believe that. I'm afraid of cancer. I'm afraid of this. I'm afraid of that. Those are scenarios where cities run into trouble. But that is not your situation. Your situation is where the plans for this location, and under state law, a typical permit has to be 10 years. And the point of the CUP process is to give yourself that time horizon that makes sense and think, how will this facility develop? And the way that this problem really will play out is that you're creating, or if you were to approve this permit, incompatible uses. You know, on one hand, you have a tower that's here. And the other is that your objective is that there's going to be tall residential development, mixed-use development right next door. So if you get that, what you want essentially under a general plan, where you have these, uh, 65-foot, 50-feet, whatever they may be, residential mixed-use, uh, you know, apartments, condos, whatever they may be, you're gonna have to turn down, according to EME report, a lot of those antennas on three sides. On the, or at least on two sides, on the, uh, neighbor, to the neighboring parcel sides, if not, uh, the Peralta side. And so you're actually not gonna get the objectives that you are seeking to obtain. So what I mean by that is, you know, there's a discussion of the communication objectives in the general plan as well being met by this tower. But if you have to turn it down, or essentially because of that close proximity, you know, dozens of feet, and the level of exceedance, you have to essentially remove a large number of antennas. There are over 30 antennas on this tower. And, uh, that will mean that at the point in time when there are many residents, residences that may, you know, have use for this, and there may also be, you know, other development in the area, that's the point in time when this tower renders largely useless, both because of the FCC requirements to have it be safe, but also because buildings block the type of high-frequency, um, mobile broadband that is being sought to be provided. I wanna also provide a bit more context about this, and I discussed this in my letter from, uh, January 5th as well, that this so-called FirstNet tower is not actually, uh, you know, specific to FirstNet. The FirstNet is a service provided to first responders, but it's not the service that first responders in your city use professionally. You know, so the EMS, the fire, the police, they're not using this tower. Um, and so I think it's just important to understand what you are getting from this site and what you are not getting from this site. The second thing is that FirstNet subscribers can use all the AT&amp;T towers in the vicinity, and those are not listed in the tower report, because it's only focused on so-called FirstNet. Is FirstNet, um, as I described in my letter from January 5th as well, FirstNet essentially is a, uh, additional band that's provided by AT&amp;T. Only several of these antennas are FirstNet bands. So you don't in fact have the documentation from the federal standpoint that would, uh, require you to so-called fill a gap or identify whether the alternative analysis has been met. I've also pointed out that my client was not contacted as an alternative. And while he does not want a tower on his, on his property, he has a long triangular point to the side that's not now buildable. And that would be a sensible place to put a tower, facing the industrial area, the BART tracks. It wouldn't interfere with his building. So, um, the federal law kicks in when the applicant is not able to meet their covered object, the coverage objectives, or more importantly, have not documented it, when they have documented their inability to meet the coverage objectives. And here, they have not done that because there's no discussion of either the neighboring sites, uh, as well as the site across the street. And so I think what I just wanna make sure to highlight for you are how these goals that the city has are written, the general plan goals, which are totally neglected in the staff report from the Planning Commission level and the Planning Commission resolution. And those are Transit Oriented Mixed Use. The purpose of this designation provides for a mix of high-intensity land uses that capitalize on proximity to San Leandro BART Station. This designation maximizes the potential of transit-oriented infill development and achieves compatible transitions to adjacent residential districts through design standards and zoning. And then Land Use Policy LU 3.4, Promotion of Infill. Encourage infill development on vacant or underused sites with residential and commercial areas. So here, there's an, I think, an attitude that this is an underused site, which makes it sort of a goal, or let's say appropriate site for a tower. But I think if you look at the general plan and your vision for the city, that's actually not how you should be seeing this. What you're doing is you're locking in that low-value use by putting a tower here. You know, there's also the example here of, um, Housing Element Policy P 1.2, and that's Provide and Maintain Adequate Sites to Incombinate the RINA. The city should maintain appropriate land use designations and densities to accommodate increased supply of housing by type, cost, and size to meet share of the regional housing needs in alignment with citywide housing priorities. And then Policy P 1.4, Facilitate Infill Development. The city should utilize infill development strategies to support neighborhoods and living environments that are served by public transit and services and conducive to public health and wellness. So, you know, these, all these general plan policies are not only inconsistent with this, uh, application, but they really are foiled by it. And so I ask you to not approve this application. It is not required to do so by federal law. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
So thank you for your presentation. We'll now come to council questions, clarifications. Request for clarifications. Okay, Councilmember Aguilar, please.
Uh, thank you for your, for your, your presentation with regards to the fall zone. Can you talk a little bit more about, with regards, how far away or how close the cell tower can be with the property owner obtaining insurance or not, not being able to get insurance?
Yes, uh, I'll do my best. And the, the standards are in the, are attached, Attachment A to my letter from the 16th, I believe. So there are two different scenarios. One scenario is where the tower is one solid component. Another is where there are welded components to it. Now, we don't have, meaning you don't have, in the plans, uh, those engineering drawings. That's just not there. So I don't have the information to tell you, obviously it's the applicant's burden to do so though, uh, what type of fall zone scenario you would, a neighboring parcel would be in. And so, uh, will be the requirement if there are those welds or different attachments, that there be an engineering certification evaluating how far that could fall under different scenarios. And then that area is ineligible for at least FHA-type reinsurance, which is one of the most common types of, uh, housing financing. The other scenario, if there are none of those, that they can provide a certification that essentially it will not fall over. Uh, this information just is lacking in the application, and I don't, can't tell you what scenario would apply. But, uh, the time is now essentially to assure that this problem is not presented to a neighboring parcel. I appreciate your question.
Yeah, and if, you, you mentioned FHA specifically. Would there be, uh, insurance for a conventional loan?
I, I don't know, you know, so FHA reinsurance, multi-family standards are most accessible publicly. I don't know the underwriting standards of other lenders, but I don't anticipate that they deviate significantly if that is a concern. Uh, FHA standards are particularly, um, I wouldn't say they're robust, but they're forward-thinking because of those loan terms are 30 to 40 years, which is part of why they are prized by, uh, multifamily, you know, borrowers. I don't answer that.
Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. Councilmember Simon, please.
Yeah, a question, um, you mentioned a large portion of the property would be considered unusable with the way it was laid out in the RF study. Could you elaborate about, on that a bit more?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Simon. So if you look So if you look at pages 18, pages particularly 18 and 15, well, if you haven't found, pages 15 of the Waterford EME report. So this is a report that gives the projected RF exposure for different building rooftops. There has not been any study of the relevant heights for the buildings that may exist next door. There only are the rooftop heights that exist. And you could see here that, for instance, some of them at a 15-foot elevation or 20-foot elevation at different points are 12%, 9%. One of the ramp levels at 35-foot elevation is 47%. The way that RF exposure works, the power, is an inverse square law. So if you have the distance, you take half and you square that, so it's four times the exposure level. I mean, I'm sure that the applicant can explain in a way that's more complicated, but fundamentally that is the back-of-the-envelope way that the exposure escalates. So when we're talking about heights that are, you know, 20 feet, 15 feet, and you bring that much higher, you also may be building much closer than the rooftops in the model. So that's the example that I'm referring to. There also is a Bloom model, I think that's on page 14, that shows those percentages. But however, they're not bracketed for the potential heights of a next-door building. So that's the sourcing that we see why this will be an issue. The other way that you see is on page 18. So page 18 is this building massing model that's used to show that the 440 Peralta site still can achieve the housing element density, but if you notice, that building is pushed way back. There's this big gap here that's not being built on. And the reason for that is because that gap is needed to push the tower further, far enough away to keep the RF levels down. But my client's parcel is here, but you can't really do that gap. So that's the reason why there are these conditions, I believe 47 and 48, or 48 and 49, that are intended to have some way of addressing that. The problems with it that are, though, that there's nothing in the record that says that 30 feet is sort of magically where it's safe. The other thing is that having that engagement process with AT&amp;T to work this out, I don't think AT&amp;T is inclined to build this tower, go through this process, trench to fiber, get their other tenants, because half the lower parts of the tower are other tenants, and then walk away from that in a year or two, whatever the building happens. So I think that that overall process is very burdensome and creates a lot of uncertainty as well as the issues that we raised about the aesthetics and the fall zones. But I'd be happy to explain further if I could, Councilmember.
It's a real quick response. So on the property of your client, are they losing property to build on?
They're using airspace that they're entitled to build on.
Airspace, vertical airspace. Okay, thank you.
Coming to us, Mayor Bowen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Just a clarification. So in the staff report under conditional use permit, the proposed location of the project, the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan, will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighboring of such use, and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or the general welfare of the city. It also goes on to talk about how, because the facility would comply with federal regulations for the construction of the facility and the appropriate equipment we had heard about earlier. And in your presentation, you spoke a little bit, several times, about how the building of the tower would deter the development of new residential mixed-use units in accordance with the city's general plan. And I wondered if you could just go into that a little bit more, and how exactly or where were you getting that information from, or what we can sort of be aware of.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, yes. So, correct, the Planning Commission staff report does have a section called General Plan Conformance. Over that section identifies three goals. And they are general plan community services and facility element goals, CS 4, CS 4.1, and CF 6. So in that domain, there is a general plan analysis. As I pointed out in my initial presentation, the concern is that those goals, I think, will be foiled if you end up having to pull down parts of the tower or turn down parts of the tower. You won't achieve that maximum access to information or collaborating with telecommunications service providers, business and community, and investors. Those things will be interfered with if the tower actually has to be adjusted in the future. But with respect to the other goals, there isn't a discussion of them. They're sort of just said, you know, generally, the general plan housing element inventory sites, density level could be met on that Peralta site. So, and that was the page 18 EME report massing model that I showed before. It said there is a way that you can constrain that development far enough from the tower to achieve that building level at that site. You know, this is an EME report, meaning it's an RF compliance report. I don't think that is a developer perspective necessarily, or a, you know, architect rendering perspective. However, that's the applicant's property, and I guess they're entitled to render some of their property less available. But the goals I was talking about, and I kind of ticked them off at the end of my presentation, those ones there, where it says the purpose of this designation provides for a mixed of high-intensity land uses that capitalize on proximity to San Leandro-Bart Station and maximize the potential for transit-oriented infill development and achieves compatible transitions to adjacent residential districts through design standards and zoning, you know, my understanding is, and my client's concern is, that the process of back and forth intrinsically with AT&amp;T is not maximizing that. It creates a serious barrier to doing that, as well as issues with obtaining financing or other problems. I don't have further analysis of how those general plan policies play out in the zoning code or elsewhere, but I think they're straightforward enough that they bear a very important consideration that was lacking at the Planning Commission level.
And then at the end of your, Councilmember Simon's question, you mentioned that the property owner interferes with use of his airspace. And so if he were to build above 30 feet, then would they be in the zone to then do the RF study?
So I think that 30 feet was an estimate given by the expert letter that I had included in my initial submission, but there is nothing in, the problem or the difficulty that I think exists is that there aren't specific study points presented in that report at various heights. There are only the analysis given at the rooftop levels of existing buildings. So you can, but you can see from the Bloom diagram on page, I believe it is 15, which doesn't have demarcations how far out, you know, to really calibrate where precisely on a property is, but because the goal of my client is to build essentially to the maximum as the general plan envisions, once you go up a couple stories, you're really right opposite that tower, like, you know, the antennas are, if you can see from the design, the 30-something antennas are all across the top. So you're really kind of right up against that, and so very quickly you end up in those unsafe levels of FCC designated RF.
Seeing no other questions, a couple for me.
Thank you, Mayor.
What is your most important concern or argument?
I think the origin of the concern, in a certain level, is the deficient alternative analysis. So, you know, there's no discussion of the analysis of 550 San Leandro or 599 San Leandro Boulevard, or my client's parcel. Had those parcels been analyzed, I think there's a potential for a site that can meet everyone's needs to be found.
Okay, thank you.
I could just...
That's fine, thank you. So the second question that I have, has, we talk a lot about what might be developed, has there been any effort to develop that parcel, your client's parcel, development drawings, submissions to the city? Has there been any effort undertaken?
There are development drawings included in the appeal letter. I'm not aware of submittals, and I'm not counsel with respect to that development, so I don't know the answer to that.
You know, when those drawings were created?
They're created after, as you could see on the date, they're created after the application was submitted. My client had been considering developing, but pushed up to do that to demonstrate and also think through for himself and his architect how that, what that would mean and how that would play out. They, you know, to answer your question, developed after the application.
So prior to this coming to the Planning Commission, there had been no indication of any plans to develop that into mixed-use space, correct?
Is your question indication to the city?
Correct.
I don't know if there have been submittals to the city, but my client has been planning to develop that parcel for some time. I don't know about submittals to the city.
But I think you told me that the drawings came after the discussions around the tower.
Yes, the specific drawings.
Were there general drawings?
I understand there had been planning to build on that property. I can confer with my client and let you know if we have more information for you.
Okay. You mentioned that the applicant and/or the city was offering paper solutions. What do you mean by paper solutions?
I mean that the attempt to resolve this intrinsic conflict between the size of this tower, the location of this tower, and the number and power of antennas on this tower, and development around it, are sought to be resolved through this RF analysis process that is envisioned in the two new conditions, or last two conditions on the Planning Commission and resolution. However, in reality, the need to go back and forth, engage with AT&amp;T early in a process, get a lender involved, get the lender satisfied with the impacts of the parcel on the leasability of this space, the engineering needs to figure out the fall zone, those issues are not really, I think, dealt with at the level of seriousness in this sort of two paragraphs that address the real-world impacts, even if they may sort of be perceived to be in writing addressing it. That's my intention by that phraseology.
Is it your belief that the law, federal law, allows us to stop construction of the tower because an adjacent property might be impacted?
I don't know the answer to that. I do, I would say that the facility always has to maintain compliance with the FCC standards for health, safety of RF.
And is there a particular distance at which it would maintain compliance?
I am not able to assess that.
So for example, you mentioned the inverse square law. So if we move that tower, let's say 50 feet from the fence line, or 20 feet from the fence line, what, just some distance, would that satisfy the concerns?
I think if I can just use the, I can only work with the materials that are in the application, just because I'm an attorney and I'm not an RF engineer, and I don't have the models that Waterford used. But we can see, and I think what's shown here is it's 133 feet, the proposed building, to show how it could be masked on the applicant site. That's how far it's set back to meet a 65-foot height. That's my interpretation of what it shows here, and so that was what apparently the RF engineer thought was needed. It seems like, you know, they are relatively symmetrical antennas. If that was the case, it seems like an equivalent site, that back distance would be appropriate from a RF standpoint, but I'm really engaging some speculation here to the best of my ability.
I'm going to indulge with one more question.
Please.
At present, so let's assume that what's been proposed is actually built. If you are operating or taking action on the adjacent property, your client's property, are you asserting that individuals located on that property currently are in danger, or simply that at some point in the future, they would be in danger?
The property development and the value impacts are immediate, but the EME report, which is what is relevant for the city's consideration, do show that the ground level are, you know, I'm just reading the report, are complying with FCC standards, and that's what's pertinent for the city's consideration.
Are there any other questions? Okay. So at this point in time, we are going to go to, we're going to open our public hearing and hear from the public. So it is 8 o'clock, and I am opening the public hearing on this appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two, three comments in person and one comment online. Do you want me to proceed in person?
Please proceed in person first.
Thank you.
Good evening. The reason that was given for the proposed 80-foot cell tower is that it needed, it was needed for public safety because there was a dead zone. I would like to see proof that residents were not able to get public safety help in this area. We deserve to see the data of actual drop calls going back at least six months. The data was not provided by the applicant. We do not need another cell tower. Did you know, within a three-mile radius from my home on Peralta, we have 712 towers and 740 antennas? Take a pause for a moment. That is excessive. The number of cell towers, in contrast, City Center Oakland, 254 towers, so the Alameda, 468 towers, City of Dublin, 73 towers. I am also not convinced that there was much effort put into looking at alternative locations. For example, Alameda County Training Center was considered. It was thrown out due to it being too much work to find out how long the lease was with the City of San Leandro. And they would have to work with the city, which is probably more red tape than if they contract with a private citizen that of course would love to have the income from leasing this space. If there is indeed a dead zone, Alameda County Training Center would be a much better location for an 80-foot tower. As elected public officials, you have a duty to protect and advocate for the citizens of San Leandro. I am against the 80-foot cell tower, as per my arguments, and the permit should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Can you move the microphone down? Yep, perfect.
My name is Mary Louise Mock. I'm a resident of San Leandro. I'm coming here to let you know that I oppose for that tower at its site. For health reasons, one of you mentioned health, and I'm sorry you didn't go further, but thank you for doing that. I'm concerned about the people that live there and their emissions that comes from the towers. They don't know what the long-term effect is going to be, and we don't need to find that out with our grandkids. I think we have enough powers here. What monumental, what monumental good does a tower do to the people that live in that area? What does it do for your constituents? What does it do for the City of San Leandro? I ask you to look at the health issues that it would, from these emissions. They said they're going to do a study. Well, you know how a study goes. Our great-grandkids will probably get the study. And also, the EPA is going to do this, and the EPA is going to do that. We're lucky if we're going to have an EPA. Trump had said he's going to do away with these agencies. So who's going to monitor what the emissions are going to do to your clients or your constituents? I ask you to do this to reject this application on behalf of the people of San Leandro, and especially the people in that targeted area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Mike McLaughlin. I work for the Western Fire Chiefs Association. I'm here tonight representing the applicant in this project. FirstNet is what we're working to try to achieve. The area that we're looking at is about a one-mile, mile-and-a-half diameter area that basically has no coverage for any carriers, as was demonstrated with documentation we submitted to the Planning Commission, and should be included in your packet tonight. Happy to provide any additional information on that if you need it, and certainly happy to answer questions. Happy to provide any additional information on that if you need it, and certainly happy to answer questions on that. I think one of the things for me that I think is important to note is that every aspect of the appeal that's been brought up that we agreed to mitigate as part of our approval from the Planning Commission, including additional RF screenings and monitoring posts, that if, if and when, even Mr. Strauss in his report writes, if this project is developed. So if this project is developed, we've agreed that we will mitigate the exposure that any building would have because our goal is to try to solve an issue of FirstNet and wireless telecommunications coverage, not create another issue, right? We're not trying to solve one problem by creating another, and so we willingly agreed to that as part of the conditions of approval. I think something that's important and I think is completely reckless on the appellant's part is misrepresenting what FirstNet is. It's not a subscriber system. It's not a dial-in and put in a PIN number system. This is a grassroots system that was built by the fire service and law enforcement ground up following 9/11 to ensure that there was reliable communications for first responders to be able to communicate. An ancillary function is, if you're an existing first responder, you can subscribe and become a FirstNet user, but that's not at all what the purpose of this system is. And it also misrepresented to you that nobody in this community uses FirstNet. Chief Bowie from Alameda County is here this evening, can speak to you.
Thank you. Your time is up.
That was a fast two minutes, though. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and will be a part of the rebuttal at the end if needed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment in person, so we will go online.
Please proceed.
Mary Wong, you may unmute yourself.
Hi. I'm a resident of San Leandro, and I live in the Cherrywood area. We are very close to 440 Peralta Avenue where the proposed cell tower would be. We are very opposed to building the cell tower because it poses a really great risk to us, to us and our surrounding neighborhood. You know, I am in the house most of the day, and I will be exposed to this radiation. And then there's so many studies showing that it causes health issues. No matter whether the camouflage of the pine tree is just to camouflage it, but it does not, the radiation is still coming out. Sorry, I'm not gonna, I don't want the cell tower there. And I oppose to the building of the cell tower. Please do not approve of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Dawn, and I'm also a San Leandro resident. I also live in the Cherrywood community with my children, a number of other families and small children here. We are completely opposed to this project. I'm horrified that this was even approved. We are very concerned about our safety, our children's safety. We pay our property taxes. We are constituents, and we depend on our community leaders to stand up for us and speak for us in these matters. And I am just asking the city of San Leandro, please do not move forward with this. I don't know any residents that are for this particular project, but we are thinking about our health and the long-term effects. Please find another site that does not pose a risk to human lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. I just want to express my gratitude that the mono-pine design does not resemble any native plant, so I don't think any pollinators will be confused by this proposal. In all seriousness, this is actually a subject I do have some expertise in, and I thank the city for this example and to be part of my curriculum. This spring would also make a nice mock trial thing. First, with respect to the health issues, I think there's a lot of confusion about what emission means. This is not the same thing as molecular emissions such as CO2 coming out of a tailpipe. It's not the same thing as radiation from a nuclear power plant, things that would emit alpha, beta, and high-energy gamma particles. When we're talking about radio frequencies, this is the low-energy part of electromagnetic spectrum. It's non-ionizing radiation, so inherently it poses very little risk. And with regards to the distance square rule, that's one part of it. The other part is time of exposure. So, you know, the gentleman said if you get, you know, twice as close, the amount went up four times, but if you get twice as far away, it's a quarter, and three times, it's almost 10 times less the radiation. I'm swayed somewhat by Ms. Kerr's remarks. I did not know that there were so many antennas in this area. I would be interested to know why that is. I think the Alameda County Training Site makes a lot of sense, but on the proposed site, I don't see why the tower couldn't be moved approximately 80 feet across the parking lot to the front of San Leandro Boulevard there, farther from the property line. And yeah, you're over the roadway, but, you know, people driving by in their cars and people in the public storage area are not going to spend so much time that it's going to present any risk. And all the folks living in houses around, your risk is negligible because you live so far away.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
Okay, with that, it's 8:11, and I've closed the public hearing. So that will come back to rebuttal by our appellant. And then we will also then explore, spend some time amongst the council, asking for the questions, exploration, and discussion. So I'm coming to my applicant. I'm sorry, my appellant for your rebuttal. So for the appellant, Green Fire Law, is there anything that you would like to say?
I thought from the handbook that I'd be going after the applicant. Is that a misunderstanding?
I don't have the applicant speaking again.
Oh, okay.
At least on my structure.
Great.
We can certainly come back to them.
Thank you for that correction. Great. I do want to, I don't see a clock. Okay, excellent. I want to clarify a couple of things about alternatives, and I think that some of the public commentators made a very important point. The site right now, when you look at the site plans, it's roughly one-third of the area is taken up by non-FirstNet, non-AT&amp;T-proposed future antennas. When I say the site, I mean the floor area of that lease. So I don't understand, and I don't see in the alternative analysis, the level of detail that allow anyone to see, probatively speaking, what was offered to these other landowners. Were they offered sort of the maximalist approach of what perhaps this 440 Peralta owner is offering with those options for all those other users? Or was it focused on that purported gap, the FirstNet supposed needs? I say supposed because the analysis that you're given of what the so-called gap is is just a 700 megahertz LTE spectrum. That's all it is. Now, that's only one spectrum that offers mobile broadband. Mobile broadband, and you can see this from the antenna inventory. There are, you know, there are also bands at 850, 1900, 2100, 3700, 3500 megahertz. These are all different bands that AT&amp;T and other carriers use to, and you see that antennas 1 through, I don't know, the first 12, I guess, packs of antennas are all different megahertz bands, and virtually all of them are LTE, known as mobile broadband. So it's not actually established here in this application that there is any gap in mobile broadband because that's provided by other spectrum as well, that's provided by AT&amp;T. And the site map of different alternatives, or more accurately, other existing towers, are only so-called FirstNet towers. But FirstNet, again, as I mentioned before, uses all the existing AT&amp;T towers, which aren't shown in your mapping. I also want to point out that when this federal notion of whether there is a gap is discussed, that's with respect to something known as personal wireless services. That's the language in the federal statute. And the personal wireless services, according to the Sixth Circuit, two weeks ago, clarified that mobile broadband, the service that's being sought to provide here, LTE, is not a form of personal wireless services. It's not a form of commercial mobile services. So it's not in fact covered by that federal preemption statute. And I think it's very important to think about that and think about sort of the leeway that you actually do have. And in particular, that this facility, as much as it may be designed, a FirstNet program was designed to provide service for those first responders. The first responder systems here in San Leandro don't use this tower. And there's no space provided on this tower for EBRCS, which is a system that the city does use. I also had a moment to confer with my client about the development intention, and he reminded me that a couple of years ago, he did buy it with the intention of building this condo complex so that even though the actual plans were dated after the application went in, the planning process and the basic layout had been in his, on his side, designed well before that point in time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have with the remaining time I have or the time that I have after it expires, however the process is for the city.
Okay, so what we're going to do at this point in time, we've got all the time in the world.
Oh, excellent. I appreciate that.
We control the clock. But I want to make sure that council members now, with respect to both the applicant and the appellant, have time to get any additional information that you require as you make this assessment. Councilmember Verdas Walton, please.
Thank you. I'm going to reference a letter that was sent on the 17th, on Friday the 17th. The numbers, it's on page three. And there's, and this is a letter just to, for the folks that are following along online. It's from Green Fire Law. It's the letter y'all sent on the 17th. I'm looking at page three again.
I have that here. Thank you.
Yeah. And I guess this is, I would like you to kind of summarize, but one of the points here is that the city deems the application approved, it will face liability for the devaluation of the property. Can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Sure. Yes, councilmember. You know, so the issue here is that the city doesn't have discretion in terms of, so I want to clarify. That point was specifically made with respect to the assertion that this scheduling date means that you had to approve this site. I don't perceive that anybody is discussing that here. I didn't hear the applicant saying that here. I think that's a fanciful idea. But what I do want to point out with respect to that assertion specifically is that the city has a responsibility to schedule the application so they are not deemed approved so that they occur in a timely fashion, so that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. And if through some error, I don't believe there was an error, but if there in fact was, and that's the reason why the application was approved and the application was not appropriately to be approved because of the non-compliance to the general plan or something else, that scenario would fall within the scope, the very limited scope, where cities can't have been held liable for property devaluation under Section 815.6 of the government code because there was a mandatory duty, because there are policies in place to avoid inappropriate approvals that have this impact on the property under the wireless ordinance. And I don't want to belabor that here tonight, honestly, because I do perceive that, you know, that there's an intention to consider this hearing rather than deem it approved. But if that scenario was to transpire, I do believe that would fall within that very narrow example of government liability under Section 815.6. I'd be happy to answer further questions about it, though.
So I'm going to follow up on that. What I think I hear you saying is, given the robust discussion exploration, you do not feel like there's liability.
Can you repeat that, Mayor?
Yeah, based on the robust discussion exploration questions, that you do not deem that there is liability by the city. It's the inference that I draw from your answer.
No, that's not my intention, but I do appreciate you emphasizing the situation in which my letter was submitted. I do want to point out that the city does not have discretion to approve a project that is not consistent with the general plan. So, you know, the statute says that when there's a mandatory duty imposed by enactment, so here, consistency with the general plan is a mandatory duty, and it could result in liability under 8.15.6. However, you know, the city's discretion is much broader, as you're aware, in terms of interpreting a general plan. So, you know, that, the level of clarity there would partly depend on how this hearing goes. But I do believe that the general plan is sufficiently clear in this situation that this is not consistent with the general plan in terms of the policies and goals to facilitate and encourage mixed-use infill development. So I do think that 815.6 is still potentially applicable.
If the tower were located at a different spot on the property, do you believe it would still be inconsistent with the general plan?
It's a matter of degree, but no. I do think that while the general plan envisions 440 Peralta being developed in the manner that the city general plan proposed for mixed-use development, if the owner in that case wants to devalue their own property and they positioned it differently, for instance, as we discuss in public comment, closer to the street side in a way that did not interfere development in adjacent properties, I would not perceive that to be inconsistent. But I also think that more importantly, from the standpoint of 8.15.6, there has to be some sort of damage or loss to another, and my client would have any claim, for instance, if there was no interference with the RF or the fall zone or, you know, those types of issues. But given the proximity, the height of the tower and such we've been discussing, that's not the case for the specific design that's proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from my council? Okay, I do have a question for the applicant. So we're going to have the applicant come back up here. If you can come, perhaps with Chief Bowie. So there's been a lot of discussion about dead zone and, you know, reaching out, providing service for a one-mile, was it radius or diameter?
So cellular technology, as it currently exists, covers about a one-mile radius in optimum conditions in all directions.
Perfect, okay.
And so with about a one-and-a-half.
I got, these are my questions, sorry. So I keep hearing about dead zone. If I drive to that location and park in front and use my cellphone, will I connect? Or will I look and see I have no bars and not be able to make a phone call from there?
So with exhibits that we submitted as part of our packet to the Planning Commission, it should be included in your packet this evening. We demonstrated, we were required to demonstrate as an alternative site analysis that there was indeed a lack. We provided the propagation maps that came from AT&amp;T directly, as well as Ookla, an analysis from Ookla that showed the coverage by all carriers as well as overlaid with user density showing that's there. I guess to specifically answer your question, I was driving by the site this evening, speaking with a colleague of mine, and I lost the call literally right in front of the property. That's not anecdotal. That was first person, and I use Verizon, which is not even the AT&amp;T piece that we're looking to cover, which even has worse coverage in the area.
And then for the chief, reference has been made about the service that will be offered. We've heard about first responders. We've heard that it's not first responders, but it's more like the Friends and Family Plan for first responders. Clarify what you think is being achieved by this site, please.
I'll speak from the first responder's perspective, which is any enhanced communication that we can gain for an emergency incident is a good thing. We do use FirstNet. We do use FirstNet, which anecdotally, I will say, is pretty, coverage is pretty poor in this area. So it would be something we would appreciate is to have better reception as first responders.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the baton back to Councilmember Azvito.
Yes, this question's for the applicant. Would the applicant be willing to move the tower to work with the community? And what process would that take?
I think, you know, there's been a lot of information shared tonight about who was contacted and who wasn't contacted. And, you know, I think it's important to note that DS Global LLC was reached out to multiple times in 2001 and did not have an interest when that's Mr. Russo's property as well as a list of other parcels in the area. So we truly have thoroughly, what they call scrubbed the ring, right? We've looked at all viable options in the area and ultimately landed at the 440 Peralta as we had a property owner who was interested in working with us. If we were to move it on it, I don't know what that would entail, whether a landlord would be interested or what that setback may be for the community. What I will share with you tonight, well, not having much of an opportunity to speak, is there's been a lot of information presented to you that's taken completely out of context. So I just want to be able to, I guess, get that on the record to recognize that the information is before you. A lot of what's been presented to you from the appellant is, has been taken out of context in the way it's represented. One example would be the fall. Well, that's part of the building approval, not part of the zoning approval, which is why we're here this evening. The building approval, we have to, we're not putting a wood post in the middle of a farmyard. We're building an engineered, modern, up-to-date, state-of-the-art telecommunications facility that will be engineered, that will have the fall protection and the seismic requirements, et cetera, just as one example. Sorry, long-winded, but there's a lot of information here, for sure.
Thank you. All my other questions have been answered.
Thank you.
Any other questions or clarification sought at this time? Coming back to Vice Mayor Bowen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And apologies if this is a basic question, but this is, this is not normally by wheelhouse. I really appreciate all the information. I don't know if this goes to the applicant or to the staff. But we've been talking about the radio frequency energy, like the non-ionizing radiation. And I'm wondering if there's a comparison between use of our cellphone, like with low bars, and what that, like what radiation's being sent out versus like how much is being sent out on a tower? Like what is, in terms of scale, are we, do we know? I'm sorry if this is a question I didn't get to ask staff before.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's a, that's a good question. I think, so radio, as a gentleman in the public comment over remotely testified that, you know, the radio frequency is a low, low level on the, would you, the radiation spectrum. It's actually very close to light energy and behaves just like light energy. One thing that's important to note from towers, the way the towers work, you know, as Mr. Strauss pointed out, there's an array of different antennas within each cell, which each put out a different frequency. The ultra-high frequencies are going to go, be very high, have very large throughput, be very fast, the stuff that we really enjoy, but they don't go very far. And then there's the mid-range, which kind of catches that blend. They still have some speed, still have some throughput and go a little bit further. And once your devices get into those areas, they start looking for the next cell to remain connectivity. Then, as you get a little bit further out, you get into the low frequencies where there's not good speed, there's not a lot of throughput, but they go a long ways. I guess a great comparison would be the difference between AM and FM on your radio dial. AM frequencies go a long way and the signal and the radio sound is a little bit tinny. FM is a better quality signal, but the radio channels can't be heard as far away, just as a very basic anecdotal example. In terms of emissions, it's been proven over and over again that the device that we carry around in our front pocket or our, whatever it is, puts out, the exposure from that device itself is five times greater than what anybody would ever receive at ground level, regardless of the level of the tower, of what a tower's emitting, as long as this within the FCC regulated piece falls within that. And this particular tower is at 13% or 87% less than what FCC would consider to be safe for the general public. So, and that's assuming, and that is calculating if we had all three carriers operating at max capacity at the same time, which is not how towers operate. They don't just turn on and operate at full capacity. They fluctuate up and down based on different things. One other point that's important to note is, all of us have probably experienced, as you get in an area with poor coverage, you'll feel your cellphone get hot, your battery be consumed very quickly is because it's increased its energy output in an attempt to obtain a signal. So then the output from your device is even greater at that point. And so, you know, I wish I could tell you there was a different way to be able to provide connectivity. This is unfortunately the way, the only way that exists. And if we didn't have to build a tower to provide connection, my life would be a whole lot easier to not be before you tonight trying to explain the reasons why. And, you know, and whether there's a need, you know, public safety towers in AT&amp;T wouldn't be working to invest between $700,000 and $800,000 to build a facility that's not needed. And so this is an important facility that we need to add. It's been brought up that, in this case, that FirstNet and AT&amp;T as a contract through the FirstNet Authority and the U.S. Department of Commerce entered a unique, one-of-its-kind contract with AT&amp;T to build out the FirstNet network. And so if the tower has AT&amp;T, it has FirstNet, which means there aren't any AT&amp;T towers in the area or FirstNet would already be covering this area. We're not looking to build something that wouldn't, doesn't need to be built.
And can I have a, ask Chief Bowie a question? So right now, especially with any of the dead zones, if somebody is trying to call 911, oftentimes other constituents in District 5, especially along like the Oakland border, and I live within this one-mile radius, have said that they've been automatically directed to Oakland, 911, and which is, can be problematic for them and I've, because they're trying to reach San Leandro. Can you speak to that? Like what happens right now if somebody's trying to call 911?
If they're calling from a cellphone, generally it will go to CHP headquarters in Sacramento and then redirected to the appropriate local PSEP, in this case, San Leandro PD dispatch. If you're calling from a landline, it would go direct to San Leandro, so.
Okay. Only a landline would go directly to San Leandro?
Correct.
Otherwise it would go to Sacramento and then back. Imagine, what's that timeframe?
I couldn't tell you. However long they take to answer the phone and then triage the call and direct it to the right dispatch center.
And then what would be the difference if you have the tower? It would then just go?
The tower would just make a difference in terms of the direct call to, to connect to Sacramento. Is my understanding. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Simon, please.
Thank you. I think this question is probably for the city or the applicant. The appellate had made a comment about losing vertical airspace. I wondered if you could respond to that or kind of elaborate if that's the case? Or do you feel they're not losing vertical airspace? If you have any diagrams to illustrate or anything, please, please feel free.
I think the, probably the best illustration is in the EME report that's submitted as part, that's included as part of the staff report.
What attachment would that be?
Attachment C, attachment five. The, I think staff's recommendation is, is that you, that you approve the, approve the application with the condition of approval, which requires that if there is development on the adjacent parcel, that the, that the facility, the wireless facility be adjusted so that there is no impact on that development. So in that, in that sense, there's no, there's no impact to the developability of the, there's no impact to what can be built on the adjacent parcel.
If I can add, just to supplement there. So it's the requirement of the wireless providers and the facility that they continually comply with the FCC requirements for those RF exposures. So if there's going to be a structure going up that has people in it and it would cause a conflict, it's the responsibility of the wireless facility to bring their facility into compliance. So it doesn't preclude the neighboring property from doing anything that's allowed under the zoning code. The wireless facility would have to change.
Okay, so there's no restriction on their height, what you're saying? They would have to decommission or remove this tower if it would impact their ability to build?
Right. And because there is such a long lead time, when someone comes to us with initial drawings, they don't go into construction the next day. It takes time to go through all the process and the permits. So right when we know there's an application, let's say for Mr. Russo's property, that would give us the time to contact the wireless provider and say, hey, they're looking to build something now on the site. You need to comply. And so it gives us that time to bring it into compliance. So there's not even a conflict, let's say, for construction workers that are building the new structure. We can make sure that there is a safe circumstance ahead of time.
Okay. Could you pull up a map that shows the proposed location of the tower and the appellate's property? Are you able to do that in one of your slides? And my question related to that is, if they were to build right up against their property line, I mean, right up against it, right now, are there any impacts to their ability to build with RF?
We anticipate that the structure would need to be revised.
You say structure. What structure?
The, if the council approves the monopine and the neighbor was going to build right up to the property line, what we've seen tells us that that monopine would need to be altered to comply with the FCC emissions requirements. We do believe that there would have to be a change to the structure based on what we've seen. But I would just say, there are office buildings and residential buildings that have rooftop antennas. Like it's not uncommon to see wireless antennas on top of buildings that have people in them, as long as the antennas are high up enough that they aren't causing emissions to the inhabitants of the building. So we would need this, you know, the data to support any changes.
Yeah, it seems like if you're building right up against, I mean, if he were, or she, or they were to build right against your property, you'd have to move this project. Does the applicant have any intention on doing that? Or, excuse me, the appellate?
We haven't received any submitted projects from the appellate yet. Like they mentioned, this is an area identified for housing and for infill. So we welcome applications. If, if the appellate, you know, wants to come into us with a development project, we would, we would encourage that and help them. And the applicant for the wireless facility fully understands that it's their requirement to comply with FCC and that they can't limit the neighbor's property rights. So they, they understand, even if they make this investment, if down the line, the neighbor wants to build something and they have to change the facility, that's a risk they're willing to take.
And the appellate, since this is kind of contrary to what you said, do you have a response to their response? May I?
This is the correct image to see. And so you see that bloom where it says 80, it's hard to read from here, but 80 feet, 80 feet and 65 feet. So the lower bloom is 65 feet. Those blue areas are also exceedances. So all the way that blue, if you can see that blue shading, those are areas where it exceeds the FCC limits. Now unfortunately, this is not oriented with respect to my client's property. My, I believe my client's property is in the foreground. But since it is a full circumference, you could see that that exceedance leads out to 65 and 80 feet. That is well into, deep into the airspace of my client's property and would very significantly have to be adjusted. And there is a report by a RF engineer attached to my letter from the 17th, which discusses to some extent how significant that remediation would need to be. I have other comments and responses as well, but I believe it's-- I hope the mayor would have an opportunity to respond to some of the applicant's comments, but I wanted to make sure I responded.
Okay, thank you. So my understanding is, if they were to build on your, on your property, the appellate's property, it would impact. But the tower would have to be removed or moved to account for wherever you're, you build your apartment--
The tower itself wouldn't necessarily have to be removed, but the antennas, particularly the lower antennas, as you could see, it is 65-foot lower height antennas, projection. Well, sorry, the lower and the higher antennas would have to be significantly powered down or, or turned off altogether. So that would very much impact the value of the 7, what is it? Six, eight, $600,000 investment. But, and sort of render large portions of it eventually useless.
Okay. Please.
A couple of things that are, that are important in this is, has already been touched on. We, as the applicants, agreed with the planning commission that we will mitigate the RF. Well, for one, we're required to, but it's also a condition of approval from the planning commission, right? And we readily accept that responsibility. I think it's important, though, to look, if you look at the right picture and you see somewhat of a triangular shape of the yellow, which is easiest to see, so it shows the sectors of the antenna. None is pointing directly at the appellate's property. They're actually pointing around and away. And tower and the antennas are directional, right? They can be directed remotely or in person. And our, we will be mitigating. We're not going to be pointing these in the window of the building next door. For one, as I mentioned, radio waves are very similar to light waves. And if our goal is to convey that, we're not going to shine a light at the side of a building, right? We'll be moving around and moving around to be, we're not looking to solve one issue to create another, right? We're willing to mitigate and address it, and we've already agreed to that fact.
Thank you for your answer. So one thing that I'd like to do is, I just want to make sure that I feel like we're starting to kind of come back to the same questions and same answers. I want to be very clear. I really do want us to focus on incremental questions. And I will call on the appellate and the applicant to answer because I do think we're reaching a point where I don't want to just go back to the same stuff over and over and over. We may, we're going to have an option to either vote to approve this, to reject the appeal, to side with, with the city's staff and the planning commission and all that. We will also have the option to add some additional conditions if we want to. We can send it back to the planning commission. So I just want to think about the questions that will guide that final decision that we need to make as opposed to just letting both sides advocate. So I think we've heard enough from both sides. So I'm going to ask Councilmember Simon, is there more that you would like to explore?
Yeah, my next question has to do with the alternative analysis. And both sides have heard about this, the different sites that we look at. And one was the Alameda County or the fire training facility. And why was that ruled out? I saw a very brief description about it, but a little more background on why that's ruled out.
So hold, hold. Just very quickly. So I need to confer with legal counsel on something very quickly. My apologies for taking you out of queue. You can just punch back in. My apologies on that. So I, no, nobody yet. So I do want to explore. Are you questioning the process of considering alternative sites? Are you seeking to go site by site by site? I just want to understand a little bit about where this is going.
Let's see.
There you go.
Public commentators, I've heard, asked this question. And I'm a bit intrigued here, too, on this table where it says, "A future of the parcel is unknown as the lease is set to expire." So I wonder if there is more background to elaborate on that particular site, or is that, that's it? is that, that's it?
So this is going to be a discussion of one site in particular?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that question, and then also I heard the question about moving the tower closer to the street. Those are the two.
Okay. So I will let each of you make one statement for not more than two minutes on this question. So you can ask the question, please, you can direct it to them, they each have two minutes. And there's not a back and forth, it's just one, two-minute answer.
Councilmember Simon, so we did work with Alameda County Fire to address our first net coverage issues, and recognizing that the training center is in the middle, we did explore the option with the department. It was identified that the land is owned or continue to be owned by the City of San Leandro, as part of Alameda County, was once the City of San Leandro Fire Department, and that just carried over. Initial conversations with the City of San Leandro were that they weren't interested at that time to explore it, because it was unknown of what the future may be, whether keeping it or selling it, and it wasn't going to be feasible for a long-term 20-year, you know, with extensions type of lease. In terms of moving it on the parcel, that would be a matter of working with the landlord to find out if that's option, an option, of whether or not that would impede the businesses that currently exist and operate on that parcel, and then obviously would be, you know, the zoning approval aspect of that.
I want to clarify that I think the broader issue with respect to the sighting and alternatives is that my client was not the owner at the time when the alleged contact with the neighboring parcel occurred. And I also want to point out that we don't have any information about the commercial reasonableness of any of the terms offered to any of these other site owners, or what adjustments may have been done to that footprint to narrowly achieve the first net objectives, rather than the objective of also leasing to many other carriers, which takes up about a third of the floor area.
Thank you.
Then coming to Councilmember Vivas Walton.
Thank you. Mine is a legal question, and it's specific to the purview of the council in terms of the appellant's argument around the future of the property that they want to build on. And I'm unclear about our ability to approve the, approve the, the resolution to reject the appeal based on that one argument of, of like, I guess what I'm trying to get clarity on is, is, does the council have the ability to vote based on the argument that it might get built in the future and it might impede on their ability to build up or what have you? I guess I'm just, I'm unclear about why. Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
So if there were already a planning, excuse me, a project filed for that property, then I think it would be reasonable for the council to take that project into consideration. But as was stated, nothing has actually been submitted to the city to consider, and as was also stated by the staff, any subsequent project that would be submitted would then trigger the need for the cell tower to be reconfigured or modified or changed in some fashion so that it didn't exceed the limits and didn't cause the problems that were potentially anticipated for the inhabitants of the, whatever gets built on the property. So I think that proviso and requirement basically covers any consideration that you might have of what might happen in the future, because you don't have anything to work with at this point in time in relationship to a future development. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to be clear. So it, it's my understanding that we're actually not able to vote on, let me rephrase We can't base a current project, a kind of, in terms of order of operations, we can't approve or reject a current project before us because of the possibility of a project that has not been submitted.
Correct.
Is there a state law that gives the council parameters around basing a decision on that one variable?
So I don't believe there's any statutory provision, but I think if you looked at case law over time, the conclusion would be that you can't condition something current on something that's speculative.
Okay. Thank you.
As a question to legal, to our legal counsel. Are there other questions? So at this point in time, seeing no more questions, no more discussions, I would accept Okay, let's try it this way. I would move that we accept staff's recommendation. I do move that we accept staff's recommendation. Is there a second out there? Vice Mayor?
I will second the motion.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Simon?
Yes, just to make sure, the condition that the applicant would need to modify or move this tower, will that be documented in writing someplace? That if they decide to move their building or raise the story of their building, is that, where would that be documented?
So I'm going to go to the team, Mr. Lee.
It would be documented in the conditions of approval within the resolution that the council is adopting.
And that's in there now?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
May I just amplify that, Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Simon, if you pass the motion as it's stated, that condition is affirmed by the city council. It is in the resolution that you're, that's on the motion, it's on the table right now.
Good, thank you.
Were the questions or discussions on the existing motion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes are in, motion passes unanimous, 6-0, one with Councilmember Bolt recused.
Okay, at this point in time, we're going to take a very quick break, and by very quick, meaning that we will gather here at nine o'clock sharp. The gavel will come down. So currently, we're taking a break.[1099.83]
Okay, councilmembers, let's start reassembling. Okay, it's 9:01 and we are back in session. We are proceeding with an item, the next item, which is 8B. 8B seeks to adopt a resolution to approve an amendment to the city's master fee schedule to add parking citation fine for the new California vehicle code violations. Like our previous item, it is a public hearing and we will follow the same process. The staff presentation will be offered by senior management analyst Natalie Villasenor. Please proceed.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez and members of the council. My name is Natalie Villasenor. I'm the senior management analyst in the city manager's office. And I'm here tonight to discuss the new daylighting law and proposing an amendment to the master fee schedule to add the new citation, parking citation fine. So Assembly Bill 413, also known as the daylighting law, became effective this calendar year. So with this law, it prohibits vehicles from parking within 20 feet of the vehicle approach side of a crosswalk to make intersection safer for pedestrians. And this law is in effect regardless if it is a marked or unmarked crosswalk, or if there is a painted red curb or not. If there is a cross, a curb extension, excuse me, being the like protrusion of the curb in order to reduce the length, the distance that a pedestrian would need to walk, so that's a curb extension, then the fifth, the 20 feet is reduced to 15 feet for the law. This diagram displays what compliance and noncompliance to this law would look like. For example, in scenario two, this displays noncompliance where there is a vehicle parked within 20 feet of the vehicle approach side obstructing the view of the pedestrian that's crossing in the unmarked crosswalk and of the approaching vehicle obstructing their view of the pedestrian. Scenario four at the bottom of the diagram displays what compliance would look like. So there's no vehicle parked within 20 feet of that vehicle approach side, which allows the pedestrian to see the oncoming vehicle and vice versa. Over the last several weeks, we've had very robust and extensive public outreach about this new law, including promotion on television, radio, print, and online. There's an example on the left of the screen of a full-page advertisement that we had in the San Leandro Times. We've also shared the same flyer on our social media outlet, and we also filmed a public service announcement video, which has had collectively about 10,000 views over our various social media outlets. We're proposing a fee of $63, and this would be consistent with other similar laws, other California vehicle laws, including the parking within 15 feet of a fire hydrant. And we would propose that this fee be effective March 1st, 2025, allowing time for further community outreach and further compliance and infrastructure changes that would be needed to comply with the law. Our recommendation is, do we answer any questions following this presentation? And we open up public hearing, take public comments, close public hearing, and ultimately that we adopt the resolution to amend the master fee schedule and add the new parking citation fine for the new California vehicle code violation. Thank you for your time.
Do we have any questions? From Resavito.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have a basic question.
Okay.
Because I've been hearing from the community, how do they know how far 20 feet and 15 feet? It's not going to be marked on the ground or nothing, right?
Well, in some instances, we'll have red curbs painted in downtown. There are various intersections where we're painting a red curb with the Public Works Department in conjunction with them. So in our outreach, we've been saying it's about the size of one large vehicle is what we keep saying. So as, as a method of.
There should be one vehicle that should be able to fit in between.
Yes, like a larger vehicle. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Member or Vice Mayor Bowen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Can you speak a little bit about enforcement of cars that are not, that are parking in those zones right now?
Yes. So right now, we're working with Public Works to make sure that we're in compliance with infrastructure. So we're painting red curbs, removing parking meters as needed. So with a painted red curb, we're able to cite for a red curb violation versus this violation of parking within 20 feet. So that's what's happening in the downtown area. For residential areas or non-downtown areas, I can defer to the police department. As the city manager's office, we oversee our third-party parking enforcement team through LAS.
So in the PD, good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, city manager. In the PD right now, we currently aren't issuing any citations for daylighting. We have educated our staff, and we're currently just issuing courtesy citations. And that's really just in response to call for service.
So can I follow up with that? So it's not, it's reactive versus proactive at the moment for daylighting?
Yes. For the police department, we don't have an active, like a proactive parking enforcement team right now.
Okay. And then, how did we determine where to paint the curbs red?
So our Public Works Department, they've conducted a study, and I also have Director Marquesas, if you'd like to speak to this a little bit more. So there's been an analysis and study in order to, to analyze which intersections are affected by the 20 feet. So I'll let her speak more to that.
I didn't want you to get too comfortable back there.
Good evening, Council Mayor, staff members of the public. Sheila Marquesas, Public Works Director. To answer your question of which areas the staff will be painting red curb, we are focusing mainly in downtown and specifically in those locations where we would be removing parking. So whether they have parking Ts and parking meters where the public may have had a habit of parking in those areas. So we want to emphasize that that is no longer legal.
Are we also painting, or can we paint red curbs near schools? It's just because obviously the number of pedestrians and bicyclists that are out increased significantly around the schools. And even at the, you know, drop off around Bancroft in particular, it can be really dangerous. And Washington Roosevelt's same. I think all of the elementary schools, it's the same thing where there are cars in residential areas that are just parked so far to the curb, and it's really hard to see kids crossing the street or pulling out to try to get past a lot of people. Obviously, it's only during certain times of the day, but it's a significant number of people. So is that a, is there a consideration for that even phased out?
Definitely look into those. It's a much larger area. And I can work with the city manager and report back what that level of effort looks like.
Thank you.
Going to Councilmember Simon.
Yeah, my question on painting of the red curbs. Just curious, I know there's a lot of curb areas throughout the city, but is there any, does it make it clear for residents and visitors and businesses if we were to paint all the curbs? And that's a lot, but any consideration into that?
It's resources that we have. Red curbs are very difficult to maintain. They do fade over time. So there's a level of repainting that needs to happen on a schedule. We haven't looked into the amount that that would require all over the city, because it is pretty intensive for it. A very small painting team that we have.
I'll go also to city manager on the side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Simon. To add on to Director Marquesas's response, there's also rules regarding red curbs and what you can cite for. And Director Marquesas is correct. Once we start to paint a red curb, we want to maintain a red curb, which is different than the daylighting law. But once that red curb is fading to no longer red, it also gives the perception that you can park there. So it is something we can't cite for a red curb that is for most intents and purposes, no longer actually red.
My next question, daylighting regards to a specific location, and we've talked about it in the past, is in residents in District Four have brought it up, Mission Bay in particular, is Burkhart and Wicks, that intersection there. And that has been a bit of a hazardous intersection because of the turn of, from Wicks, I guess that'd be southbound onto Burkhart. And the city has taken proactive measures to red curb that, to make it safer. And I'm receiving more feedback on that intersection moving it back further. Is that, is the daylighting something totally separate than that situation from a safety perspective for cars, or is it just pedestrians?
Intersection daylighting law is to protect pedestrians. That was the primary focus. For the specific Burkhart, Wicks, Burkhart intersection, I believe that was concerned with the width of the roadway. And that was the primary focus, similar to Manor, right? It's the width of a traveling vehicle and a parked vehicle, less so about the site distance.
Okay. And we have jurisdiction as a city to move that based upon your analysis judgment? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowen, Bolt, please.
Yes, thank you. I think I, my concern is that if we have not pulled a parking meter, and it's not red, and it's still in that zone, and a car is parked there, I mean, that would be horrible. Pay your money, you walk out, and you got a ticket. I get it. I know the law's set, but still.
This is part of the reason why we're proposing an effective date of March 1st, to allow us time to remove the meters that we've identified that need to be removed and to paint the curbs red in that downtown area.
Okay, so March 1st, we won't have this problem?
In downtown. And if they're.
Parking meters and painted red.
That is the, the hope and plan, that the, all of the infrastructure will be prepared. But I will say, if for whatever reason, a meter is still intact, or the curb is not painted red in the downtown area, we have the ability to warn people, send a warning instead of citing. As we're not planning on citing anyone if it's not like fully prepared, especially if there's a parking meter there causing confusion to the citizens.
And I will let city manager also weigh in on this question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bolt, I have provided direction to staff that if a parking space looks, if it looks like a parking space and talks like it's parking space, we will not be citing someone in that parking space until we've done the work that we need to do to make sure it doesn't look like one. And also, if it is a space, let's say in front of Chipotle, you used to park there all the time, we will make sure that it's red so that you know you can no longer park there before we be inciting people in those locations.
Great. That, that's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you. But additionally, so you get into the residential area, and I don't propose we paint all the curbs red. That would, I mean, we'd have to hire two painters full-time to just go around and paint curbs. But I am for good jobs. So if we got the budget, let's do it. If we don't, fine. But what if we, in the residential areas where they're not painted, and it's a corner that, you know, a lot of people been parking on, we warn for six months? Is that a possibility that we don't just jump right into? Sorry. Is this over here?
Why don't you start over here?
Okay.
Now we're really getting to big-picture policy questions as opposed to the suggestion that we, we have a citation amount of $63. So I'm gonna, I think your question is, can we extend that citation free period or the courtesy citation period for a period of six months?
And, and the goal, I think, would be, we, we probably know a lot of these corners already where it's going to be a problem, where it would be a warning. We wouldn't just not do anything, but, but warn them, you know, with, with some type of flyer or something. Hey, look, on this date, this isn't going to be a warning, it's going to be a ticket.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna ask a question for.
Thank you for.
Our system allows us, our system allows us to track who has already received a warning, right?
Absolutely, yes.
So what we can do is provide warnings to those who have not received a warning for the first six months. I make that clarification because I wouldn't want us to be on warning number 10 in the first six months for a vehicle.
That's even better. Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Councilmember Aguilar, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, there are a lot of questionable intersections that don't have crosswalks. People will use them as crosswalks. How are we going to determine? Like, I live on an intersection that does not have crosswalks, but folks park, abutting each other on the corners. Is that going to be a problem? Or is that even gonna, are we even gonna pay attention to that? Or is, are we just focusing only on crosswalks?
So the law includes any marked or unmarked crosswalk. So it would include, if it, if it looks like a crosswalk, it's used like a crosswalk, it would include that as well. And Director Marquesas, do you need to speak to that on the analysis?
Yep.
Maybe I'll add is, the, the goal of the daylighting law is to protect the pedestrians. And so intersections, T-intersections, four-way intersections, where you normally would find a curb ramp, it's an, intended that it's an extension of the sidewalk, therefore a crosswalk. And so this law applies to whether there are lines in the roadway or without lines in the roadway.
What about an alleyway that intersects into a boulevard? I mean, would that be also considered daylighting? Would that need to be in effect?
I would probably have to take a look at that intersection. Again, if you find generally a curb ramp, it's intended that the pedestrian would be directed to cross the street at that point.
Okay. And then just, in reading this, I know it's reference to cars, but in the actual law, it says it's prohibiting stopping, standing, or parking, standing, not pursing, car standing, correct?
I would have to reread the text to confirm that.
The answer is yes for multiple people.
Answer is yes.
Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Coming back to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to confirm, and I think this was the question that Councilmember Aguilar just asked, the curb does not need to be painted red. It just needs to be an intersection, correct? And you could give a citation. I really appreciate the clarification of, of the warning. I do think that, and the fact that we're doing it until March 1st so that we can get more of the messaging out. Have we worked with San Leandro Unified School District to share out resources to all the families?
We have not, but we can definitely reach out to them to share our outreach efforts and our material that we've been sharing.
Yeah. And I will say, I just give a shout-out to SLPD that when they do do their rounds in the morning or after school, it does help with traffic, just the parents are aware, and, and also the neighbors are aware of what should and should not be happening. So I think that could be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Resavito, please.
Okay, so what I understand is it's a marked or unmarked crosswalk. So this literally could apply to any corner in San Leandro. You know that, right? Am I right on that? Okay. So basically, we just stay away from any corner parking. Okay.
I do want to, to reiterate that it's, only applies to the vehicle approach side. So it's, it's only when, like, there's the diagram, go back. So it only applies if, on the side where the vehicle is approaching.
Yeah. Okay, so it doesn't apply to a, okay.
Yes.
That's my question.
Councilmember Simon, please.
Since this is a state law, other jurisdictions, other cities, do we know what they're doing to advise, other than newspaper notifications, but to illustrate to residents what's happening so they're not caught by surprise?
We've seen similar outreach efforts, kind of around the same amount of weeks that we started. So there are similar flyers, and I haven't seen a video as great as ours, but there are definitely, the same diagram's been shared throughout many cities. We're using similar graphics throughout the different cities. So it's.
No, but no physical, other than advertisement, there's no physical thing to place out there that's cheap and simple?
I have not heard from other cities that are placing signage, because a sign is not required for the law. And I can, and we've been in contact with many other parking managers to kind of share efforts and to see what other cities are doing. But there hasn't been any cities that I've heard of that are putting up specific signage for daylighting.
Nothing, no. So no physical improvements onsite that you've heard of?
Not that I've heard of, other than removing meters as needed or painting curbs in some areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've pretty much covered everything. I do have one question. I'll start with city manager, and you can toss it to PD. For citations, I know that the downtown area, we rely on LAS. Can we use PSTs to issue parking citations?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the answer is yes. Lieutenant is saying yes, so yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. The time is 9:22. So we welcome the public sharing your thoughts on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no public comment in person, and we have one hand up online.
Please proceed.
Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Oh, yeah. I listen late, because now I just learned who's been taking my parking spot out in front of Chipotle, and somebody else wants to steal my courtesy parking over by Bear's Deli. Jeez, what is this city coming to? I, I want to state my appreciation to SLPD for the approach of issuing courtesy warnings. It seems to me, what we have been hearing about this, you know, it's going to take a while for it to really kind of become ingrained in people's consciousness. So I think the warning approach is really good. Even, you know, like a $63 ticket that can sting, sting more for some people than others. And we do live in inflationary times. And, and I think part of being, you know, kind to all of our residents as a city is, you know, not to see this as a, as a revenue enhancer, gotcha kind of thing. I appreciate the, the paint, the curb painting, because actually we are all accustomed to, to knowing what the red curb means, even if we can't measure 15 feet from a parking hydrant if our life depended on it. So that's all cool. I actually do like the idea of, of signage. Doesn't have to be every corner, not even every corner downtown, but you know, the, the periodic sign, I think, will help for people to kind of learn this system. I think we could use signage in other regards, like I saw a sign in the downtown plaza about 811, or was it 911? I think, you know, those are, those are good kind of signs, too. And, and just while I have a moment here, you know, it occurred to me after the last discussion, it's too bad that Councilmember Bolt had to recuse himself because he had a lot of good information, I think, on that last matter. And here's another, you know, public service matter. It's good that he's in the discussion. Maybe you just shouldn't vote, but why not allow him be part of the.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, we have one more public speaker. Pat, you may unmute yourself. Oh, nope, Pat is gone. Oh, Pat is back. Pat, you may unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. In regards to, you know, the 15, 20 feet from the crosswalk, are we doing, we have some that are by, I live by a school, and some of the curbs are already marked, or painted red. And people park in the red zone around, on the curbs or anything. Can we at least get some painting done on curbs that are already red to extend it a little further?
Are those all of your questions at this time? Did she hang up?
Pat, are you still there?
Yes.
So do you have any other questions at this time?
No, that was it. I'm. I'm sorry, I thought you were closing it out.
No worries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no more public comment.
Okay, so first, I will close the public hearing at 9:25. I will, I know there was a little bit of an exploration around curbs and how we're prioritizing which curbs we're painting. So I'm going to come to City Manager. I know there's been some discussion. I saw you taking some notes specifically around school sites. In this case, I think the public commenter was asking about taking an existing red curb, so to speak, making it compliant with the distance. It might be painted red for 10 feet or 5 feet. At least what I heard was, hey, can we just go ahead and finish that out? Thoughts, concerns, reactions?
So the question of extending a red curb that is shorter than 20 feet to 20 feet, I think we need to look at the capacity and cost of that and maybe come back to council, because there are a lot of schools in our city. If the question of painting curbs farther than the 20 feet, I think that would be a different topic for a different day.
What I heard was basically taking an existing red curb, just kind of brightening it up and making it compliant with this regulation. Okay, looking down Council Row to see if there are any other questions, comments on this item. Okay, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Resavito.
Yes, I just want to say, yeah, I'm encouraged by this. And yeah, I'm looking forward to this. I hope this is a step for, when we get our street sweeping more robust, we could also have people move their cars for that, too. So I hope this is a great step in that way. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just thinking about East 14th Street. I assume Caltrans is doing the same to paint the red curbs on their up and down 14th Street?
So I'm going to start with Director Marquesas on this item. Because as Vice Mayor said, you got a little too comfortable back there.
We are working with Caltrans. So any changes in the Caltrans right of way, we would need to work with them to submit an encroachment permit for any changes to the parking signage and the meters. So an encroachment permit, if not already submitted, and hopefully we'll meet the March 1st deadline.
Great, thank you. We will not call you back up.
Okay.
I do have, oh.
Before going on to your next question, I'm going to add a little bit more color up here from City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I did want to just make a clarifying point to everyone so that we make sure, for the record, it's clear. We are not painting every curb downtown red. We're only painting where there currently is a parking meter that tells you you can park here so that the patrons of downtown don't feel like it's just a free parking space now.
Got it. So there could be a world where we could work with Caltrans to say this intersection is a high injury network spot, like just down the street from City Hall on Dunn and 14th, for example. Okay, and then just as an idea, recognizing that it would be very expensive and arduous to be able to paint red curbs around schools, especially because some of them are residential streets. But I think that there is certainly conversation with the school district right now about making safer routes to school, lots of different ways that we make things safe. And so maybe there's a way that we can get SLUSD to partner with helping with the cost of or the work of. I know they seem to have a little bit more money sometimes than we do for certain things. So I don't know, we can talk to them, maybe.
Going to Councilmember Simon.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this, of course, for safety reasons. But my public commenter also mentioned signage. And I'm not saying we put signage everywhere, but just continuing to think about what type of physical something out there we could put to remind residents or visitors or whoever of this, because most people probably won't know until they get the citation or the warning. So if we can just keep thinking about it, I don't know if those little dots that are in the middle of the street, maybe there could be a different dot in that spot. Just thinking out of the box, long-term, maybe there's something that we could put out there that's cheap and effective, but we could educate our residents that, hey, this green dot or red dot or purple dot, whatever, means don't park here. And then there's, a little reminder might go off in their head, hey, me, I shouldn't park here. Because it's for safety. We don't want people there for safety. And whatever we can do to keep them out is a good thing for the crosswalkers. Thank you.
Okay, and the only comment that I will offer on this item is just to continue to uplift this notion of schools, because yes, we do have many schools, but it's not that many. And in all of San Leandro, we probably have maybe, including private schools and the like, 20 some odd schools, maybe 30 if you include all the church schools and stuff like, so it's not hundreds of schools. And the priority on keeping children safe in particular, because they are so short. And when cars are blocked or parked there, you, really, they're very hard to see because of their height, their stature. With that, I will go back down Council Row looking for a motion. Did you have an additional comment or just want to move the item? Okay, so I've got a motion from Councilmember Resavito. Vice Mayor?
Well, second, Pat.
And a motion from Councilmember Resavito, and a motion from, with a second from Vice Mayor Bowen. Seeing now for the discussion, please vote.
All votes are in, motion passes unanimous, 7-0.
Okay, at this point in time, we have no presentations or action items, which is 9 and 10. We'll move to item 11. And I'm going to start with City Manager. I know that we have submitted a number of requests for scheduling discussion items at the planning session. Now that, for instance, for myself and maybe for at least one other council member, I saw that they actually went to the clerk for submission to the record. How would you like us to handle this, just to make sure that we are covered in whatever ways you think we need to be covered?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As councilmembers have submitted their referrals by the 3 o'clock deadline today so that they are able to share those referrals tonight at this meeting. So it would be for councilmembers to share their referrals tonight for the record.
Okay, but to clarify, if they were sent to the clerk for submission to the record, is that considered a submission to the record?
No. The reason why we do the referrals in advance is so that what is discussed tonight is either something that should be referred, or we can make updates, as I've done with some councilmembers, has updated the language on some of the referrals. But what we've previously done is that if it was not submitted, it cannot be mentioned at that night's council meeting.
So I want to go to my councilmembers. Are you prepared with items that you've already submitted in writing to read them back into the record? So I'm going to start with Councilmember Simon.
I have two. The first is including a Native American land acknowledgement at the beginning of each council meeting lasting approximately 30 seconds. For example, we begin by acknowledging that we meet on the traditional land served by the Aloni, Maquema, and Confederate villages of Lasani. We pay tribute to America's first people and all elders, past, present, and emerging, and are called upon to learn and share what we learn about the tribal history, culture, and contributions that have been suppressed in telling the story of America. And my second is an ordinance requiring, an ordinance requiring private failed sewer lateral replacement at the point of sale of a home or business. This will protect the environment as well as reduce storm flows into our wastewater plant.
I'm sorry, I was distracted. Could you read that one again, please?
Yes, and this is in place at East Bay Mud now. Castro Valley Sanitary has it. And this is an ordinance that required sewer laterals on people's homes when they are failed, broken essentially, that the city would require the homeowner or the buyer of the home at the time of sale to repair that failed sewer lateral. This will protect the environment by preventing sewage essentially from going into the ground. Plus, it will reduce storm flows through inflow and infiltration. Essentially, the ground soaks the water, the water feeds into the broken sewer lateral, and then that inundates our wastewater plant. So over time, it will reduce the flow into our plant, reducing our capital costs of future plant improvements. It's a long-term way to save the city money, paid for by the time at the sale.
Thank you. And are there any others that have not been read in? Okay. Going to Councilmember Bolt, please.
Yes, thank you. The first one I have is completing the four-second timers for crosswalks, which is making sure that the crosswalk comes on four seconds prior to the light turning green. That's done in a lot of cities. It creates, as we were just talking about, safety for pedestrians. This is a way at crosswalks, it gives the visual that someone is crossing the street four seconds prior to the light turning green. Next. 2017, we did a study, the Arts Culture and Library did a study on what the state of the arts are here in San Leandro and how we can bolster it. And one thing that was suggested is that we do a 1% tax on any new, big new development. And that 1% would come back to the city in an account that can only be used for arts. And this is something that we looked at and was suggested, and I think we should actually follow through and do it now. Safe parking lots, as we know, there's a lot of RVs around town. I don't necessarily agree with just kicking them all out with nowhere to go. But, you know, we have some major problems in areas pertaining to the RVs that are just parked on public streets. So I'd like us to commit to finding a parking lot. You know, I know we said we've been doing it, but I think we need to commit to it and actually follow through. Another one, it always comes up, it's street lighting. The city doesn't necessarily have a standard for street lighting. And so we need, and there are other cities that have it, and there's ways to go about it. But that way, we know when a resident calls and says, hey, it's too dark in this intersection, or it's too dark on my street. What does that mean? You go out there, yeah, it's dark. Or someone says, hey, it's too much light, right? So we need a standard that gives us a parameter so we can effectively respond to the residents with, you know, okay, something needs to be done, or we're within the parameters. Oh, I guess my time's up. No, so.
Please proceed.
Okay. Tax transfer elimination for, when someone's buying a house and these people are teachers, city employees, fire, EMT, and police officers, and veterans. So the city has a transfer tax that was brought up. And I don't, you know, my idea is that we want to attract people and if we can find ways that our city employees, fire, EMT, police officers, teachers, and veterans can stay in our city, I'd like to see us do whatever we can around that. Vacant building tax, if a building's been vacant over 10 months, we can discuss timely. You know, this is, this is stopping services coming into our respective city. And, you know, we should consider, I think this would urge landlords to try and get someone in there and try and provide some services in those buildings. And then lastly, but most important, raise the minimum wage, $20. That's all.
Councilmember Aguilar, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. So I put forth a request that San Leandro adopt a family non-discrimination ordinance. I want to protect family structures, in particular, those, you know, who have modern families or different types of family structures. I sent a request along with a sample ordinance that Berkeley has implemented, Oakland has done this as well, as well as Cambridge, Massachusetts. And I attached Harvard Law School press release indicating such. I would also like to, I've also put forth a referral that the city of San Leandro achieve 100% on the Human Rights Campaign Municipality Equality Index. I have attached a PDF indicating requirements to achieve the destined score. I've had presentations at the National League of Cities during my presidency and brought folks from the Human Rights Campaign to discuss how cities can become compliant. And one of those is adopting a family non-discrimination ordinances, ordinance, while with being LGBTQ-friendly within the city of San Leandro, Municipale District. So those are the two referrals that I have put forth.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember Bolt, we have at least two people who have some of the similar things. So the, did, what time did you turn it in? One of the first ones is incorporating justice, equity, diversity, inclusion as a framework for how the city fulfills its mission. I'm not going to go into the why, just because I can get long-winded. And the second one is outdoor lighting ordinance, establish regulations and standards to reduce light pollution generated by residential, commercial, industrial lighting fixtures and devices. Partner with, the third one, partner with agencies like the California Early Care and Ad Workforce Registry and Pathway to create a workforce pathway for childcare centers and providers. Establish a vacancy tax for property owners whose properties are unused or underused. Include allowable timeframe to, include an allowable timeframe to display campaign signs to San Leandro's local requirements for temporary election campaign signs. And then the last one is to recognize Lunar New Year, a California state holiday, and promote cultural diversity and inclusion through a city-sponsored community event. Thank you.
Okay, so, did everybody go? I think, I read these before, but I'm not sure which of these were before, so my apologies to my councilmembers. The first referral was that to hire a person within the Economic Development Department that will focus on attracting strategically aligned businesses to San Leandro, i.e. strategically aligned to our plan we've already adopted. Number two, direct city staff to report on lessons learned and analysis undertaken in relation to the 2024 Storm Water Fee Ballot Effort. We talked about doing that, but we need to actually get the report. Then for the charter guidelines, we've talked about this, but I want to be very clear. So it's evaluate the potential city charter revisions guiding elections, looking at having both at-large seats, more than one, and district seats. And also consider increasing the term limits to three terms instead of two. The next one would be by ordinance, and obviously in accordance with California law, implement rent control for our most economically vulnerable households, namely those participating in the CAL-Fresh program. Those households' potential rent increases would be capped by an index value that increases at 5% per year. Then the next one, again, by ordinance in California law, consistent with California law, increase the number of residential structures that can be owned within the city of San Leandro by a single corporation or affiliate. And so residential structures is talking about condos, single-family residences, duplexes, triplexes, quads. So limiting the number of units that can be owned by a single corporation or its affiliates. The next one is for the mobile home rent control ordinance to be updated. And in particular, to look at capping potential rent increases by an index value to no more than 5%. Limit the increases that occur on the sale of the property, of the unit, to the median value as opposed to 90th percentile. Establish actual penalties within the ordinance for noncompliance. And to update the ordinance by introducing an audit clause that does not exist in the current ordinance. The next one focuses on something that we've talked about, namely roads. I'll just say roads in general. in general. And City Manager will work on condensing this, because this is a little bit verbose, but the basic idea is first, whatever we did last year or this current fiscal year is the minimum that we're going to spend on roads, index to inflation. Number two, any additional money that we get from outside through grants, et cetera, that's on top of. It's not instead of. Number three, if we don't spend the money this year, it's added to the minimum budget for next year. It's not a pass. We're actually growing that amount of money. And the fourth thing is that 50% of any budget surplus, right now 50% is allocated to pensions, the remaining 50% will be allocated to roads. That's the recommendation that I want to discuss. The next one, I want to increase the patrol division, traffic enforcement in particular, increase patrol division by two people in the next fiscal year. I propose that we adopt a pilot program under which we test the use of drones as first responders. We should have at least one launch location centrally located within San Leandro, something that's actually being piloted by some other cities. As I've discussed with several of you, and I mentioned in an earlier meeting, I want to modify the default energy product offered to San Leandro businesses and consumers, residents, to Bright Choice as opposed to Renewable 100. That would give us 91% clean power and provide over $3 million of savings into the San Leandro economy. I would like to see, as my next referral, the adoption within San Leandro of the Alameda County multi-unit smoking ban, that we look at that and extending it, because right now that only covers unincorporated San Leandro, extending that to the city of San Leandro. Next one, down at our Marina area, Marina Park, we have had an abuse of the parking slips that we have, the docking slips that we have down there. So adopting an ordinance based on any of another, other cities, that limits the amount of time that people can use those slips to 30 minutes, and have a similar time limit for use of the boat launch. And the last piece of that is you can't park in San Leandro waters, your boat, you can't be permanently there for more than 48 hours. You can come and visit, you can't stay parked in the lagoon, you can't stay anchored in the lagoon for more than 48 hours. I think that was my last one. These all, these other ones are from you. So with that in mind, we will proceed to item number 13. And I have had a request, and I would like to honor this request from, oh, reports. Anybody have any reports? Look at that look. Okay, Councilmember Resavito.
Yes, I have, I attended EBDA operation and maintenance meeting on January 13. We discussed two new pumps that they're putting in. And on January 16, I attended the EBDA commission meeting. That's all my reporting.
Thank you. Councilmember Pragular, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. I did attend Alameda County mosquito payment. However, I was not yet approved or appointed to attend the meeting, so I just tended for fun.
Okay, any others at this time? Very quickly, Bakma did not meet. We'll be having our planning retreat at the end of the month. I was appointed to the Executive Committee, the Board of Directors of Ava Community Energy. And we're doing some planning, particularly focused on risk management for the remainder of the year. And we have an ACTC planning retreat in the next few days. Okay, anything else? So let's move to item 13. It's here where this is an adjournment. I've received a request from Councilmember Azavito to adjourn our meeting in honor of Guadalupe Hernandez-Lopez. And I don't know if you'd like to say a couple of words on Guadalupe.
Yes, I just wanted to adjourn this meeting in her honor. She did a lot of Jefferson Elementary volunteering, and she was loved by the students, teachers, and the parents. Thank you for all she did.
In recognition of her kindness, her volunteering, let's take 10 seconds of silence.